Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the two September third city council meeting. Trish, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman McClatchy.
Here.
Alderman Bassi.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman Cook.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is the public comment portion. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening? I see none. Moving on agenda, items five A through five G. Is there any items that the council plan on voting no on? If you have any questions, once we make the motion, we can ask those questions. I'm looking for a motion to approve five A through five G. Alderman Miller.
I'll make the motion to approve five A through five G on the agenda.
Second, Alderman Cook.
I will second that.
Thank you. Just on these items by city council? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Bassi.
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is six A is Castle Auto Easement Vacation. A motion to approve an agreement and pass ordinance to vacate a stormwater easement located at eleven twenty-one South Route thirty-one. I'm looking for a motion to approve as presented. Alderman McClatchy.
Thank you. I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Santee.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion on this item by city council. Alderman Santee.
It's great that they're moving forward with, you know, their own building for the Subaru portion of their dealership.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Any public comment regarding this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Alderman Bassi.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is six B is Trio Sign Variants, a motion to pass an ordinance granting sign variance at fifty five twenty West Elm Street for two additional wall signs, not to exceed four wall signs with a combined total of eighty-two square feet, and a variance to allow two additional free standing signs on the property. Looking for a motion to approve as presented. Alderman Miller.
I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance granting the sign variance to Trio.
Thank you. Second, Alderman McClatchy.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion by city council?
Alderman Glad. Yeah, the only question I've got, the petitioner is, is basically with these sign variances, how much different are going to be than the Trio that he's got down there at Bull Valley?
Can you come?
I can answer that one.
You can answer this.
So, the other Trio is just a fueling station and not a car wash. This has a car wash element and the truck stop element to it. So, it's a much larger facility.
But, let's just say, it's a larger facility, so he's going to have more signage, but it's all going to somewhat blend in similar to what he has over there, correct?
I would say so, yes.
Yeah.
The center button.
That's what I mean. I mean, it's not going to be, you know, and then I don't really have a problem with it. Thanks for coming up.
My pleasure. Just real specific, the four signs on the building are identical to the Bull Valley site. It's just the ID signs, as Ross had mentioned, advertising the other businesses, the car wash and then the CFL lane. And we're, the ID signs were allowed one at two hundred square feet. Our three still is at a hundred and three square feet. So, we're less than the maximum allowed.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other questions by council? Any public comment? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Alderman Bassi.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is Friend Avenue Lift Station Improvements, a motion to accept the bid from Mark Crestmary Construction LLC in the amount of one hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and a ten percent contingency of thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the pump, pipe and valve replacement and other necessary improvements at the Friend Avenue Lift Station. I'm looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Santee.
I will make a motion to approve the Friend Avenue Lift Station improvements as presented.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Cook.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion on this item by city council? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Alderman Bassi.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is Route one twenty street light replacement, a motion to approve a task order in the amount of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars to Baxter and Woodman Incorporated for professional engineering services for the Route one twenty street light replacement. Looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Miller.
I'll make the motion to approve the task order in the amount of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars to Baxter Woodman for the one twenty street light remainder replacement.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Davis.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Questions by city council? Alderman Cook.
Yeah, um, why doesn't the city engineer do this rather than?
Why doesn't the city engineer do this instead of Baxter Woodman? Problem with that, or?
The scope of the work would take up so much of his time versus all the other stuff he's doing. I mean, I believe he's capable of it, but, you know, there's a lot more to the scope here than just for him to do. It'd take up a lot of his hours versus, like, the other things he's doing, like, the, you know, doing the engineering services for the parking lot. We're watching that. We have the other parking lot that's going to start next week down by the boat launch. So, I just, he doesn't have the time to do it.
So, he's overworked?
No.
Okay.
This would, but I think this would put him to a point of being overworked.
So, when you're replacing these lights, what do they do once they take them out of there? They're replacing them with new, correct?
This is just the engineering services. Next year, we would budget to construct and replace the lights.
Okay, so I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yes.
Okay, I am sorry for that. But, uh, okay. Because I would have a suggestion is put them on the side of town, light it up that area in there if we're going to be removing them and put them out there, just as suggested. I guess that's it.
Thank you. Alderman Miller.
Um, this is, this is the rest of our place.
From Green Street to River Road, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Alderman Glad.
Yeah, what's our estimated cost, do you think, on this whole project once it's done?
Uh, well, the thirty-two thousand plus the EOPC is about two hundred thousand to do the construction of the lights.
Any other questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Alderman Bassi.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is food truck ordinance. I'm looking for a motion to pass ordinance adopting mobile food truck regulations to type four business and license regulations of the City of McHenry Municipal Code. Ross, would you like to present this, or?
Um, sure. So, my department was asked by multiple individuals to take a look at food truck ordinances. We currently do not have an ordinance on the books to regulate food trucks. Most other municipalities do have something. We have not had many issues up to this point with food trucks in the City of McHenry. However, we're starting to see them pop up in kind of the, in permanent spots. For instance, there's one on one twenty that's been there for about three or four weeks, if not longer. They close up at night. They leave their trailer sitting there and they open back up in the morning. So, those are the kind of, we kind of want to put an ordinance in place to regulate also the signage. There was one on West one twenty that was using a sheet with, with spray paint on it to advertise their products. And so, we, you know, we, we want to make certain that we're, have something that's aesthetically pleasing in place for the community. So, I don't know if there's any questions. I guess the big question was, the way the ordinance is written now, you're allowed three occasions per week within the city. It does cost you each occasion. However, that does mean that someone could set up Friday, Saturday and Sunday in the same spot. However, are not allowed to store that truck or trailer on that location overnight. They have to move it at night. So, I don't know if council is comfortable with, with that, because that's kind of what we're seeing on the weekends right now is where they're, they're setting up shop in a parking lot and they're there for, for two or three days. So, input, you know, if we need to change something, I can take it back, obviously, and bring it back at the next council meeting. But, this is kind of where we, where we stood. Mayor, I know that you were, did you get a chance to read through the whole thing? Are you comfortable with it?
Yeah.
And we can always change it at a later date, too, if we, if we have issues.
And that's what I was thinking, that we could kind of test it out and see how it goes. And then if there's council members, maybe they have other input, but I know Ross and I talked several times regarding this, so. But, Alderman Santee, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would like to see how this works and take a look at it for six, for twelve months and have it come back to us. Um, that's just one, one opinion. And then the, the pricing, to me, it's, I guess it's a good place to start with. You know, in the future, depending on how this business model grows and how often we're, we're dealing with food trucks, that we may, well, once again, we can look at it and, you know, may be able to discuss the actual cost per event. Thank you.
Alderman Davis.
Yeah, I just had a question on, on the three days. Does that include, like, if there's a special event? Or does that kind of exclude that? That's an exception?
So, they are exempt from special events that are sponsored by the city.
Okay.
Alderman McClatchy.
Thank you, mayor. I'm all for small businesses, but I just don't want to see this thing get out of control and these pop up like mushrooms all around town. My concern is not just that, but the, the health issue. How does, how does, I'll give you an example. Pearl Street Market, we have food trucks there every Thursday night and the county health department comes fifteen minutes before and they check it all out. How are they going to check these people out?
Well, they're suppo, I mean, the, the truck or the trailer itself has to be registered with the county. So, they, they do, they do regular inspections on that. What my guess is, is the health department is coming out to, to the Pearl Street Market because they're, they're doing outside grilling, outside of the truck. Are they doing, are they doing stuff outside of the truck?
No.
And they're probably just choosing to come to that event and inspect.
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting at is, who's, who's going to tell the health department to go out and check these people out? And say I started a Ross's barbecue.
Well, I think you'd use Frank, by the way.
And, um, so I go and fill the application out at City Hall, right?
They have to supply us with their permit, their health permit.
Their health permit?
Mm-hmm.
And what else do they?
Liability insurance and, um, I think that was, that was it. Permission from the property owner, correct?
Okay. So, who's going to get the word out on this? You know, I know right now.
We will have to put it on, you know, social media the best we can. I mean, it's, it's going to be an educational thing. So, stopping and talking to the individuals and maybe Doug, we can use, you know, because some of these facilities like Smith Central and stuff like that, you know, they have them pretty regularly. So, we'll reach out to those, to those owners and let them know.
Okay. And, and I'm all for coming back to this, hopefully in June. I know it's the end of their season now, so maybe June, July.
Yeah, we'll see how it plays out. I mean, if there's no issues and everything's going smoothly, then, you know, I can always update council on that. But, if there's issues, we can address them later.
Okay. I'm, I'm just concerned about the health thing. That's.
Yeah, I, I mean, I. Someone could open a, you know, in a.
Lemonade stand.
Yeah, it ha, it, it happens. It happens. And, you know, we contact the health department when we find those to sell.
Okay, so, so one pops up, who places that?
Well, our department would.
Okay. So, you go there, oh, we don't know what you're talking about. Do we give them a warning ticket, or?
Five hundred dollar ticket.
Right off the bat?
We typically don't like to do that, because maybe they don't know.
They don't get the word out.
Well, they would get the word out. We don't, we don't, you know, we like to be more of a compliance-based department where, you know, we, we ask for compliance as opposed to finding people in businesses. So, um, we definitely have to get the word out, though. So, and maybe it's, we make a flyer, you know, and when we see these food trucks at the, at the Pearl Street Market, we hand out the flyers to say, hey, heads up, city now requires.
No, 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 no. They're, they're all covered. Miller Point and Pearl Street.
No, I know, but that's, but what I'm saying is.
They're all both ends of the world. They don't get the word out.
They don't, if they're, they're exempt because that's a city-sponsored event. However, if they go down the street tomorrow to Smith Central, that's not.
Okay.
So, at least they'll have the knowledge that, that the permit's required.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Miller.
I was going down the same line as Alderman McClatchy of the pop-ups. And, you know, one shows up on Saturday, doesn't have the education that they needed to have a license. How are we going to enforce it? I was hopeful that you were going to say, we're going to be kind and someone's going to show up and give them the application. Um, so I was hopeful that that was the direction you were going, so thank you. Um, communication is going to be key. And then they're on license and exemptions on, um, number C. I think, I think it needs to have a correction. Um, it says, "Any mobile food truck vendor who violates the terms or conditions of license is subject to the revocation of the license by the license." So, should be by maybe the licenser.
Yeah, license E.
Not that I'm wordsmithing, but.
No, good catch. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So, is, I guess maybe this is a Monty question, because he's involved with the food trucks. Is the application online, or?
Ross is going to be the food truck king, so he gets to decide how this works. But, if, if I was the king, I would make an online application, have them do that. But, all, his department's the one that gets to handle it, so I'll let him decide.
I'm king-ing Monty, by the way. But, yes, there will be, we'll do a laser fiche online form and make it as simple as possible where they can attach the documents that we're asking for, you know, so that, and then also they can pay online as well.
And, and I only ask that question because I get called. I don't know why I get called by these rogue food truck people that ask me, how, how can I have a pop-up food truck in McHenry? And I send them on to. So, if there's someplace online, I can send them.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be, that'd be great. Thank you. That's it.
So, if we pass this tomorrow morning, if you go to our website, we have the news and notices, like, right in the middle. There'll be a news and notice thing. We'll have on there for a long time, hey, food truck people, here's your rules and here's a link to the form. And even a year from now, when that goes down, if you go to forms, they'll type in food truck and you can get your food truck form real easy online, assuming Ross wants to do it on, he said, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
They don't like to be called food truck people. They like to be called food truckers.
Food truck, whatever you want to call them.
That's FYI. The wordsmith.
And I don't know if the Herald's going to do a follow-up story, but she is in the audience tonight. I'm sure she's right now.
Alderman Bassi.
Um, quick question. I've, I've gone through this a couple of times. Are we limiting the area that food truck can go, or is it just anywhere? Like, it says, um, on someone's property, could I technically have a food truck in my front yard for three days if they take it down every day?
Sure. I've never seen it.
You won't either, but I just, just a question.
I mean, block parties, things like that, I, I, you know, but, yeah.
Okay.
They could park it and drive it as long as it's on private property.
Okay. I do like food trucks, I'll be honest, but I really think we do need to have an ordinance. So, I absolutely support it and thank you for putting it together.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Glad.
Yeah, that's why I almost would like to see it come back to council for approval on these things because I think we'd find a lot of times where somebody would, would want to bring out a food truck that may not be appropriate in certain areas. And I think we need to review that. Again, I just feel to some extent that the council should be looking at these as far as whether, you know, maybe they, they meet all the criteria, but maybe the area where they're putting it, just, we don't feel is, is appropriate. And again, it, it just opens up the doors. I was just amazed just by that answer right now that you can have a food truck for three days on somebody's front lawn. What's that? In the driveway, okay, because it's going to be on hard surface.
But, no food truck is going to, I mean, what, what's your clientele?
The neighbor.
The neighbors? I mean, that's, that's, you know, I, we just don't see it and that's why it's not addressed in here. If we saw it happen, absolutely, we would address it. But, we, you know, we modeled this ordinance off of a lot of other municipalities around and none of them addressed that.
Now, let's talk enforcement. Saturday, Alderman Miller brought up, it pops up on Saturday morning. Who's going to enforce that?
Well, I get enough pictures of things that happen on the weekends.
I understand.
That the property owner on Monday morning would get a, get a nasty grant from us.
Well, maybe they should be shut down right away as soon as somebody sees it.
Well, they could be in, in, you know, it's not out of the question that I go over there if, if I know about it. You know, if I've got time on the weekends, it's.
And the chief is just kind of, he knows where I'm leading it to, so. Couldn't we have our officers there?
Yeah, if, at any request that Ross makes, we will enforce for him if he doesn't have somebody on staff. That's not a problem. We have all the time for all other co-relations out of his department as well.
Yeah. So, maybe between you and the chief, you can come up with some, some way of knowing. You don't want to harass everybody that actually came in for a permit. But, if you know that there's some out there that, that didn't, you know, it, it would behoove us to just take care of it right then and there rather than letting it happen, you know?
Correct.
So, thank you.
Alderman Cook.
No, he answered my question.
You'll put one in your driveway for, for three days?
If it includes my family, I'd have a block party. All right, now that you brought it up, if I wanted to, say, have a family reunion, like, at West Beach and have two food, food trucks there, because that's what it would take to feed my entire clan, would I have to go for a permit to have that there and then have these food trucks there?
Is that it? Yeah. So, for any, anything in the parks, it's going to require that special use application. Okay. Uh, which is, is our current policy right now. And those all come before you on the consent agenda. Anything that wouldn't normally be in a park that's going to be brought there is required to be on a special use application. Okay. Thank you for future reference.
Just because it was brought up, is there, is that on the form? Is a food truck one of the options? Or you just write it in?
Uh, I don't remember, actually. I can tell you in a second, though. Could always add it. Yeah. Um, it's not, it's not on there currently. Balance House is our big one. Tents, Other is, is on there. Band, DJ, performer, all those other type of things, but we can put a box really quickly for a food truck. But, that's how we, that's from the Parks Department, that's how we handle it. We don't allow you to just pull up and have your food truck in a park.
Awesome. Any other questions coming? Clerk, please call the roll.
No.
No.
Just one quick question.
Oh.
I thought you were, yeah, I thought you were waiting for a roll call. Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. As far as taxes, how do they get collected on these? Because all, all the restaurants pay taxes. Do they do a form in April and?
They're supposed to, they're supposed to submit their local sales tax, yes. Now, tracking that? Carolyn, maybe that's a question for you.
Yeah, the tracking it won't be the easiest thing because a lot of these businesses will do it quarterly. So, um, we can. It's just it's very delayed with the state. So, we might not find out till four, six months after they're done here, if they filed.
But, there is a way for them to pay taxes, though.
Correct. There is.
Okay. Thank you.
It's actually in our ordinance, too. They're, they're required to. So, I mean, again, enforcement is one thing, but they are required by ordinance.
Yeah. And I would venture to say having the ordinance would make it much easier to track these sales. Well, right now, we have no way to track. We don't know who's in town and when. So, I think this'll, this'll give the city a little bit more knowledge in terms of when those, when those trucks are in town and then we can follow up. Yeah, with the form, at least now I know their name, so I can at least look at the report to see if they filed before. I would have no idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
I don't think so.
Yeah. Sorry, my bad. Looking for a motion to approve six E as presented. Alderman Santee.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Miller.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do want it coming back next year.
Okay.
I mean, that's my motion.
And if there's any.
Yeah, because just in case we have any questions, you know.
And if there's concerns in the meantime, reach out to Ross as well.
Exactly, yeah. Contact Ross. I get it.
Okay.
But, I just want to make sure that's in the motion.
Perfect. All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Bassi.
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Uh, no discussion items. Sending staff reports. Uh, Rise Up is next week, September twelfth through the fourteenth. If there's any council members that would like to volunteer, please reach out to me ASAP so I can put you in a spot. Um, and then also, I don't know what the also was, actually. But, I think that's it. Uh, we start setting up. I'll be out there all weekend marking things out. And then the stage and everything will start coming in on Monday, Tuesday, and then Wednesday, all the sound. Uh, tents will be on Tuesday. So, there's, by Wednesday, the place will be set up for Thursday's show, so. Uh, yeah. Other than that, if you have questions or any concerns or anything like that regarding Rise Up, please reach out to me. Uh, other than that, I don't think there's any other staff reports. Oh, chief.
I just had one thing. The September eleventh ceremony will be at Vets Park on the eleventh of next week. So, it starts approximately nine AM, but if you get there, eight forty-five's a good time. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, any, that's it? Okay. Uh, mayor's report, um, as many of you know, we lost a great person in McHenry, great friend, a great father. And Ben Keith, unfortunately, passed away Monday morning. Um, so our prayers go out to him, his family, especially his wife, Kim, Riley, Nora and Molly, their daughters. Um, you know, I've been in touch with them. They're doing well, but, uh, obviously, they need a, they need all the help they can get to get through this. So, um, we don't know any of the, um, you know, as far as funeral goes or anything like that yet. So, once we have that, I'll make sure that goes out to council. Uh, but other than that, uh, he was a great human being that gave everything he possibly could to this community. So, uh, he'll be greatly missed, to say the least. So, other than that, that's all I got. City council comments? Alderman McClatchy.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I echo everything you said. Ben was a great guy. He did a lot for McHenry. He was, you know, he was part of the three veteran organizations that do well and he's going to be missed. Um, you forgot to mention something, that you've got a GoFundMe page?
Yes. So, I set up a GoFundMe page today. Um, I've been working with Kim through, through this whole. There's going to be a bank account set up as well tomorrow. But, there is a GoFundMe. Uh, it is on Northwest Herald as posted as well. So, the link's there. What's that? Will post. Come on. Um, just kidding. I'm just kidding. I will send that link out to everybody, but I did post on my page as well. Thank you. Any other city council comments? Alderman Glad.
Yeah, I want to talk about enforcement of some of our ordinances over the weekends. Uh, one being signs in the rightaways. We have a developer or builder, home builder, a couple of them, both north and south of us that have been putting them through the city for the longest time, that I have many a times approached Ross about it. Ross finally got somebody out there to pull some of it. But, there's still some spots that they're still putting them in. And now they have another area that they're advertising. And there are five times as many signs out there again, all over the place. And I think to some extent, uh, we need to do something about that. We need to come up with a game plan. Uh, he has talked to the, uh, local builders, but, uh, again, being a bigger conglomerate, they, but kind of push it for us over to corporate and then, of course, good luck.
Yeah, and we, we take their signs and then they just buy new ones and put new signs in. And, and we've stopped by and talked to the local office, but they did say, you know, you got to deal with corporate. So, um, it, it's one of those things where, you know, it's on a weekend, paying guys overtime to collect these things. I mean, if it's, if, if the council wants me to go that route, I can definitely bring people in on the weekends and pay them overtime to collect signs out of the rightaway. Um, I don't have an issue, I don't have an issue with that. I have, I have staff that would, would do it. Um, I have brought some staff in previously and given some comp time to pick them up. But, you know, it's a regular thing. Um, I have brought some staff in previously and given them some comp time to pick them up, but, you know, it's a regular thing on the weekends. And you can chase these guys around town, putting up signs and taking them down. They put them up Friday afternoon, and they take them down Sunday, Sunday night. So, I, I'll gladly do whatever, whatever council wants, wants to be done about it.
And it isn't just those developers' signs. Uh, we, we get, you know, gutter cleaning places, uh-
We buy houses.
Everything and anything.
Mosquitoes, everything.
And, and, you know, I, I think of a couple municipalities around here that, uh, years back were, um, you didn't go with more than two or three miles over the limit, or you were getting a ticket, and they had a reputation, and, you know what? Their reputation spread, and everybody knew about it. And maybe that's what it is, is we need a reputation to say, you know what? You got to follow our ordinances. This is what our ordinances are on, uh, signs in the right-ofways, period, and that's it. Now, maybe, and again, maybe we look at that for, for next year, uh, as far as budgeting, uh, that we get a part-time person in that department. You know, even if it's for one day or two days, uh, you know, you can imagine if they're out there on, on Friday putting them up, and either early Saturday morning, we're taking them down and throwing them away, I think they'd get the message pretty quick after about two weekends. And, of course, all these other outfits that throw up all the garbage signs. So, I just think it's, it's worth, uh, the discussion to, uh, see what we can do as, as far as, if nothing else, uh, show that we mean business when we, uh, create our ordinances. Well, and, and again, I don't know how well we could do as far as finding, uh, the problem winds up is, is you don't know, you've, you got to be able to prove who put it up and everything else, and it, that could really get to be a, a headache. But just losing those signs constantly, I mean, the sign's one thing, but then the stakes that they use are pretty heavy, heavyweight metal signs. I'm sure that costs them a pretty penny, so. Uh, again, I just think, uh, I want to bring it up to council, uh, here at the meeting, so that, uh, it's out there, and maybe we think about a, a solution for it down the road. Not saying it's just going to happen overnight, you know, but something that we'd need to think about.
Thank you. Alderman Cook?
Yeah, I wanted to give a shout out. The fire hydrants are looking pretty damn good, you know, they, they really shine out there. And everybody was calling me, I'm saying, hey, how come we have-
White.
White.
Gray.
I go, well, you know, it's to blend in with the snow, so we have the firefighters digging around for them. But other than that, um, I had talked to Steve about, I came into a situation going down Crystal Lake Blacktop to Mill Street, where the flashing light, uh, yellow caution lights are for kids and pedestrians going over to, uh, Fort McHenry. Scared the snot out of me, because there was a panel truck in front of me, and I'm coming down here, and I didn't see the light off to the right. And this guy decides to, you know, walk right out, and I wasn't looking to the left. And, uh, I think there should be a light that's higher, like eighteen feet, over the middle of the road, so that when you're coming down the hill, you're seeing this thing without a semi being there or a panel truck. I mean, it really did. I, I thought the guy was going to get creamed, and, by me, because I didn't see him, and I really didn't see the, you know, yellow light. Um, so Steve had told me that for next year's budget, to start looking at it, uh, maybe. I think it just needs to be more lit up. I mean, you got a really nice on Curran Road, and still somebody got hit, you know? But coming down that hill and the trucks and everything else, that does cause a, I don't know, blind spot for me. So, I just want to bring it up. I know I'm ahead of myself again, but, uh, when it scares me, I, you know, and I don't scare easy, but, uh, you know, I don't want to hit anybody, and I think other people have come across that. And these bikers that come across there, they seem to, like, ride the bike up to it and then hit the, hit the button, and the lights come on there, and they just hool on through, and, you know, so all of a sudden, it's your fault? You know, I need a, I think I need a little bit more of a warning, I guess. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other? Alderman Glenn?
Yeah, I'd like to add on to that, and that's the fact that I was never in favor of these things, because, uh, they give a false, uh, impression to the pedestrian or bike rider or whatever that's crossing that road, that people are going to stop. In a lot of cases, people don't realize they're supposed to stop. And that's why I, I've never liked them in the first place, and I think to some extent, I don't know, uh, public education a little bit more, I don't, I don't know. Uh, it's just like, um, and I'm sure probably the whole council had gotten the, uh, a couple of emails, uh, and we had a individual that, uh, came up here, and his counsel back away is, uh, about Oak and one-twenty as far as the left turn out there. Uh, they suggested that we look at putting the left turn lane in. Of course, that's not our decision, that would be I-dots, and it would be quite costly. Uh, but again, you know, where the bike path is, people think, uh, right away, oh, the light changes, and they just figure they can just step out. And, yeah, maybe, maybe legally, uh, and again, I guess that would be for the attorneys to decide, but, uh, maybe they have the right-ofway, uh, but the thing is, is, uh, who cares whose fault it is, and, uh, or anything, if somebody gets hurt, that's the, the thing we need to look at, so. Uh, again, you know, uh, public education, uh, hopefully could help, uh, with a lot of these issues.
Thank you. Alderman Miller?
To belabor it, the one on Green Street, Steve, doesn't the whole walkway light up, illuminate, aren't there the in-pavement blinky thingies?
Mm-mm.
The, the pavement does not, no.
That'd be pretty cool, though.
Well, I've, I've seen, I've clearly, I've clearly seen them somewhere-
They make them.
Where the little blinky thingies in the side, in the pavement?
In Florida?
In the pavement.
We, we don't have any in the pavement. None of, none of ours have the flashing lights in the pavement. What? I, I-
I've seen them somewhere.
I've, I've seen them, not in-
Phil says they have them.
They have them. We don't, we don't have them. We don't have them in town, but they exist.
Well, then, clearly, I'm confused, but while you're doing the research, can you look for those?
Yes, I can look into that.
I think that would help.
Alderman Cook?
I know what they're talking about, because people are looking at their phones, they need something flagged after coming up to an intersection or something like that. So, I have seen them, and because people are looking down all the time rather than looking around, I get it, you know, but it's, to me, it's silly. Why should, why, when you're trying to walk down in the traffic, looking down at your phone? At least hold it up, you know? No, I'm just kidding.
All right, we good? Looking for a motion to approve? I mean, motion to adjourn? Alderman McClatchy?
I'll make that motion.
Second, Alderman Santee?
Second motion.
Please call the roll.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.